I appreciate it. Thank you.
The goal is, yeah, the goal is for it to be on Zoom. I think that's it. Just pass. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, October 10th, 2022, a work session with the City Council at 4:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson. And Smith.
Here.
Five councillors present, Your Honor.
Thank you. councillor Johnson says she may be joining us via Zoom, and so when you see her, please.
Just saying, it doesn't work.
You have a bad monitor? His monitor's shot over here. So, do we have any business from the public? No? Yes. I know. I see. I see. Give me just a second, okay? Let me give them, give me a second. Trying to get councillor Olson online. Did it work?
No. I can do without, I think.
It's broken. Okay. Want you to move over to councillor? You want to move over there?
Is there anything that isn't on here?
Let me get him set up, and then we'll get started again. We have one person that wrote, signed up to speak from the public, and it's Tom Cordier. Please. Sir, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, Tom Cordier. I live in North Albany. I'm speaking today about the letter dated September 29th that introduces the portable toilet issue. Excuse me, I'm hearing something.
Do they have a page number on that?
Yeah, page 32. Thank you. And, I mean, I only have three minutes, so I won't read the five lines that encompass one sentence. I'm in favor of clarity, and I find that sentence too long and too complicated to really understand at the public level. This, there's an or in there, or a couple of them, and so I don't understand the difference between an excuse, the next to the last line, "The exclusive use of employees of a private business that is not connected to city water and was established prior to July 1st" as compared to or for for public use on a city property, for public or private use on a private property when there is an existing permitted connection to public sanitary service and water on property associated with approved land use for institutional, industrial, or commercial use. I think that's overly complicated, and I'm an old guy, and so I remember, I think, in the days of four-tran programming, we used to use if-then diagrams to help make decisions, if this case, then that, if this, then that, and I would recommend that that, that this thing be uncomplicated, and the other thing I don't understand is on private property for the exclusive use of employees of a private business. Does that mean that private businesses can't offer a restroom facility in a portable toilet? Because if they do, they'll be in violation of this code. I mean, I understand, I think I understand the desire to manage everything. Over the top, I think. But exclusive uses and all this stuff, when it comes to public and private use, I don't think there's, it makes any sense to have that exclusive use requirement in that sentence, and perhaps it would be clearer if it were a clearly, more clearly written sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, let me ask the city manager, can you have somebody take a look at the? I don't hear a microphone.
Okay, I'll speak loud. You'll hear from Chris Bailey a little bit later on this very subject, so clarity in writing these staff notes is very important. I would agree with you, and we're always trying to simplify language. But if Mr. Cordier needs help in understanding a certain part of it, we're happy to provide that, either myself or the staff.
Yeah, I think.
I forgot that you need to turn both mics on. Public consumption.
Clarity, it's not just me. I have my opinion, but I think it would be inappropriate to have that kind of long, elongated sentence in the public document.
Thank you very much. That's good. I have good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Does anybody in the gallery like to speak from the public? Thank you. At 410, "Review of Financial Policies," Director Yeager, page 2231 in your packet.
Good afternoon. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing three different financial policies. We have our overarching financial policies. We have our investment policy and our risk management policy. I just wanted to note that we have few changes to any of those, and things are a little out of place in the council agenda. So, I'm going to turn this over to Garrett Cudahy from our investment advisors, government portfolio advisors. You're going to see a memo that's on page three of your agenda. It actually goes with the financial policy that starts on page 11, so you're going to probably jump a little bit. So I'm going to turn this over to Garrett.
Well, good afternoon. Mayor Johnson, council members. For the record, Garrett Cudahy, Chief Investment Officer and Principal with Government Portfolio Advisors. We help the city here, working in tandem with Gina and team to make sure that your funds are well taken care of and invested, and you have funds available when needed. What's in front of you is a memo outlining some policy changes. The good news is, you're in good shape. So your team's been doing a great job. These are very benign, and all we're doing is catching up to statute. We're really just changing some language about agency securities, just to make it super clear what we're talking about around a guarantee or just supported entities of the government. All are allowed by statute as written. And same thing with some ratings on bankers' acceptances, just to update that to where statute is written. Happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Councillor Novak.
Thank you. Let me make sure my mic's on. Yes, it is. Okay, so under General Guidelines, number four, it says adequate reserves will be maintained for all known liabilities, including employee leave balances and explicit post-employment benefits. I'm wondering if you would tell me, please, how that's being funded.
What page are you on, councillor?
It's number four, under General Guidelines. I don't know what page. I'm sorry. It's early on, under.
Well, there it is, right there. Yeah, adequate reserves on page six.
Yeah, we're not on page six yet. We went to page 11 for the investment policy.
So I need to ask this question at a later.
I'm going to cover financial policies at the end, because I have outside people here, so I wanted to let them go first.
All right. My apologies. Didn't mean to be out of line, out of order, whatever.
I don't have any questions. Any other questions on this first page?
Is that the first page of the agenda or the first page of the report?
Page three.
Page three of the report.
Yes. There's a memo. I had that in page two, and then page three is the report by GPA. And I'm just housekeeping. That's what I underread. That's why I interpreted it, yes. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Olson?
No.
Okay, thank you. Director?
Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. Next, we're going to cover our risk management policy, and we have Darren Godfrey from Hub International with us today. So I will turn it over to him. He is virtual, though.
Can you hear me?
Where does his report start?
His report is going to start on page, let me find it for you. His report starts on page 25.
You're way out of order.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can. Hi, Mayor Johnson. Darren Godfrey at Hub International. Also with me is Mike Godfrey. He'll speak towards the end of this report as pertains to the workers' compensation side of the report. I think I can share my screen. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Do you see, do you see the screen that's up?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you scroll out and make the page bigger?
I sure can. Let me see. Does that help?
I don't see that on page 25.
It's his report.
Does that help, or do you need it larger?
No, it's not.
I'm sorry?
Can you make that page a little bigger?
Councillor Olson, this report isn't included in your council agenda. We'll make, we'll get a copy of it to you later, though.
Hey, and we're supposed to digest all those, okay?
Well, this is in the city council agenda.
This information isn't.
Not, not this.
This piece isn't part of it.
Right, right.
This information's not there.
Okay, whatever. Probably the short term or something, whatever.
Go ahead, Gina. Or go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'm here to cover the property liability insurance coverage and premium history. I'll just start at the very top of the report. In the 2022-2023 policy period, we had an increase in property values of approximately $21.6 million in total value. That's what city insurance services trends each policy year is by 10 points, 10%, and that with a rate increase of approximately a small percent. We have a total 11% increase in premium costs associated with the property, the earthquake, the flood, the boiler and machinery, coverage, and the crime coverage. So as it pertains to the tort liability, here we have a, we have an increase of about 12%, premium in total cost premium. And auto liability premium up, about 7% increase in the auto liability from the 2021-22 policy period to the 2022-23 policy period. No changes there, but the cyber, the cyber liability this year changed for the city. CIS could not maintain full limits in-house with their coverage form, so they had to go to the excess marketplace and provide an excess layer of $750,000 of excess liability above the $250,000 Level 1 liability to reach our million-dollar liability for cyber coverage. That's the major change this year, is the cyber world has definitely been changing, and losses are trending extremely high in this line of business, and so have premiums. So that this year was the major, I'll say major, change and major increase in terms of percentage of premium increase was as it pertains to cyber liability. Airport liability, though the premium hasn't changed much from last year to this year, we do still have an open claim that's still out there for that one unfortunate loss that occurred from the airport. So far, they reserve or paid about $12,797 on that claim from that suit, that death suit from the family. And so that is still an open claim, and it's just sitting open until further notice from the other party's attorney. No changes to the public official bond. That's all in-house with CIS's crime policy, as well as the public official bond, the finance director's policy, and no changes to the volunteer accident policy. That's just a summary on page one and two of this report that summarizes premium and coverage losses. As we get into this report, we'll see that for the 2021-2022 policy period, we didn't have any property losses. For the last five years, we've trended extremely well with not having property losses. So there, there's no loss to report. Tort liability and general liability side of business. Right now, in 2021-2022, again, very fortunate, this past 12 months, and that is from 7/1 of 2021 to 6/30 of 2022, we did not have any tort liability claims, which is the first time in the past five years that we haven't had any tort liability claims. As you can see, the 2022-2023 policy period starts from July 1st of this year. We have had some reported claims already in the first two and a half months that this report was generated. But as it pertains to this report, no liability claims for the prior 12 months policy period. This gives me a report of where these liability losses are coming from. And in summary, this is from 7/1 of 17 to 6/30 of 2022. You can see that the police and the fire are developing the majority of the tort liability claims. Now, this is fairly standard as it pertains to other cities and counties where they do have police and fire as part of their city. So these losses that are incurring in these departments are fairly standard in terms of where their losses are coming from. This gives us a history of the last five years of where the losses are coming from by dollar and by percentage of where the claims are being created by what department. Terms of auto liability claims, again, in 2021 to 2022, very fortunate that we haven't had any, we did not have any reported losses in that policy year, though we have some already reported this year. And again, where the losses are being generated in terms of the department, Public Works, Police. Auto physical damage claims in 21-2022, total loss of about $43,000. We've had a few already this year. And in total, actually, we'll get to that towards the end of this report. There'll be a summary of where these, how many claims are coming from each, from each line of business. Again, auto physical damage losses are coming from the police department, Public Works, and Fire. Majority from police and cruisers involved in accidents or pit maneuver accidents. In terms of claim history, 2021-2022, we were down here about 16 total number of claims for property liability. Totally $43,012 in terms of incurred losses. That average is down. We've been averaging around 2023 losses in this per year. So 2021 and 22 losses were down significantly. But again, this year, we haven't been as fortunate. For the last two and a half months, we've had some claim history. Property liability claims cost by type of claim. This will give you where the auto liability, auto physical damage, general liability, tort liability, and the property losses, where they're coming from, and the number of claims involved in each line of business. Auto liability is typically where we see the larger losses coming from. In cities and counties, typically, the tort liability is where the losses come from. And that leads into the workers' compensation line, and we'll take questions after we're done with the report, for sure, but I'll leave it up to Mike to talk about the workers' compensation moving forward.
Thanks, Aaron. So from a work comp standpoint, state of Oregon's in pretty good shape. Trending has been very solid the last five to eight years in terms of overall premium. You'll see that the city's standard premium has continued to drop, which is very typical with the entire state and coverage. which is very typical with, with the entire state and, and coverage. We anticipate on a go-forward basis that we're, we're really pretty close to the bottom of the barrel, so to speak, and anytime now we should start seeing small incremental increases just, just, just to keep up with medical costs. In terms of our overall number of claims, we, we were down a little bit this year with, I think it's 41 claims or 45 claims, excuse me, but really right at par with our peer groups of, of other similar cities and counties and things of that nature. So that's, that's been good and, and very close to expected. Our claims cost, our incurred claims cost, which is the claims cost including reserves. So what is expected to pay, it's not just dollars that have gone out the door. Our incurred claims cost, you can see, have steadily declined over the course of the last five years, with 2021 being the best in the last five years. So that's been a very nice trend to see and has been noted with the decrease in overall premium because we're not alone. A lot of employers and organizations have, have really spent a lot of time and energy on safety and mitigating costs from a risk and which mitigates the cost. So that's a, that's a great thing. The next on the lower left hand are experience mod. Experience mod is the debiter credit that is a deviation in premium based on, on your individual experience. And we have for the last five years taken a slight tick down, starting at 1.20, which means you're paying a 1.20 of the rate, so 20% debit. We call this a debit mod. And this year, coming down as low as 109. The trending has continued to stay that way. I currently calculate 1.07 for the 2023. That's very tentative, but you like seeing that kind of trending and the goal would be to be below a 1.0. Following forward in terms of paid to standard loss ratio, you see that 2021 was a, a, a great year. At this point in time, the trending is just continuing on. And then with claim frequency, as we spoke earlier, at, at 45 claims, it's, it's very equal with what we expect or what we call is the expected claim count for your peer groups. On the next slide, the next, the next slide in our, in our presentation will show you that basically where the claims are coming from is, is not untypical. It's split exactly equal between fire and, and police. And the claims costs are pretty similar as well. You'll see with public works being the essentially third and Parks and Rec, very similar, being the fourth. You know, from a breakdown, this is very typical of all, all the situations we're in with public entities and, and, and pretty straight public. So overall, in the last five years, you're looking at about $2.2 million in total incurred cost. And hopefully we continue to have the same trending, which that has been lower each year. This year, the total was 326, 183 on our incurred costs, which is, is by far and away the best year we've had in the last five and probably longer than that. So that's what I have.
That's it from us.
Okay.
You'll let me know when it's the right time to ask.
Okay, next section, okay. So where, where would you like to go now? Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Yep.
Thank you.
As an assurance guy, I like to hear the numbers coming down, so that's a really good thing.
Yeah.
It's a great thing. Good job.
Okay, let me go. Where, where would you like to go, Director?
Well, I just wanted to mention that one of the reasons that we're seeing a drop in these numbers, especially for workers' comp, is due to Chuck Perino, our city emergency manager and safety officer and the work that he does. In fact, that's one of the things that I added to the risk management policy this year was his position. It wasn't in there and he's a very important part of that. So I wanted to make sure that, that was in there and that's one of the few changes that we actually made to that. So if there's no questions about the risk management policy, I'd like to move on to the financial policies. And we didn't really have a whole lot of changes to that. One of the things that we wanted to add, though, was federal procurement. And we wanted to note that where federal guidelines and the city's guidelines are different, if ours are more restrictive, then those are the ones that we're going to go through. So we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as that goes. We also wanted to call out that there is a, a federal financial policy guideline, spending guideline. It's available on our website. This policy will link to that. It's like 173 pages, so I didn't want to include it all in the council agenda. But if you ever want to go out and read what we do for federal purchases, it's out there. We were audited by the FTA. They do a triennial review and they were very happy with our, our documentation. So we're, I think we're in a good place there. Some of the other issues, we did a little bit of cleanup where we called out that community grants, if we continue to offer those, will, will be every odd numbered year since we're on a biennial budget. We won't be doing those annually. And then finally, we just removed a couple of where it says the city will seek the GFOA awards. Those are more activities. I don't know that they necessarily belong in a policy. We certainly will continue to do that, but it just seemed like as we're trying to tighten up our policies that those maybe didn't really belong. So, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I, the information that we did have there, I went through and I do have some questions. So thank you very much. So I'll go back where I began. Under general guidelines, number four, it says adequate reserves will be maintained for all known liabilities, including employee leave balances and explicit post-employment benefits. And the question there was, how is this being funded?
Well, we, we worked that into our budgets for, for part of that. I mean, if somebody is having leave, then it's generally going to be because they, we're already planning to pay them. But we also have contingencies in place. So if there's a case where we don't have that budgeted, if it's something that's unexpected, each of our operating funds have a 5% to 15% contingency that we can, that we can tap into. However, in this case, with these known liabilities, the, the leave balances, really, I think that's when, that's going to come into play is when somebody leaves the city. And we try to always know that ahead of time, especially for retirements, so that we can budget those appropriately.
So it's, if I understood you correctly, that's under a percentage that you keep for contingencies?
Not necessarily. If we know ahead of time that somebody is going to be retiring or somebody's going to be leaving the city, then we can budget that specifically into our salaries and wages and, and then it would get paid out of that.
Thank you. I have other questions as well. Under number five, it says the city will share the cost of providing local services. And I'm wondering how the city does that? Share the cost of providing local?
Where's it, where's that at?
That is under number five. The city will, and then there's a, there's a
I got it.
A string of words, and I just jumped down to where it says, "share the cost of providing local services." And I'm wondering if you could address how the city shares those?
Well, it depends on the type of services. So some of the activities, like the community after-school program that is ran by GAPS. I had GPA and GAPS, yeah, GAPS. We do, we do contribute to that program and they run an after-school, before-school program. So that's a, that's a program that happens in the city that we can't do, but we partner with them and by contributing to them so that that can go on. So those types of, those types of programs, you know, when you get into economic development, honestly, I don't know all of those, but I know that Seth Sherry is working on partnering with private organizations in order to do certain, certain things in the city. But, you know, I, honestly, I don't have details on that.
And this kind of goes back to where Mr. Cordier came up and was talking about the need for clarity. It could be that I am not as clear on that as, because when I saw local services, what popped into my mind wasn't GAPS after-school programs. It was things like water and sewer and things that people who live here pay. So the city does not partner to help us pay for those then? Because I, that's what I was thinking when I read those words, local services.
Gina, is the Albany Community Pool a good example? And then also our partnership with CSC to help with the Low Income Assistance Program? So I think this is just a policy that says whenever we can partner with somebody else, we will.
Okay.
Exactly. And like, like Peter said, you know, the, we partner with CSC to do low income assistance for water sewer programs for city services fee. So they help us do some of those that we really can't administer ourselves.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other counsel have a question?
I, I wasn't done, sir.
Well, I'm going to give somebody else an opportunity while you get your thoughts together. So I, I was giving somebody else an opportunity while you're getting your thoughts together, that's all. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I never yielded, I don't think. I, I didn't need to get my thoughts together. I have things written out. So, and in that same sentence that starts with the city will and goes to share the cost of providing local services, it also says, "and support favorable legislation at the state and local," or excuse me, "the state and federal levels." So I was wondering if the converse is also true. Can we not support unfavorable legislation at the federal, federal and state levels? For instance, when something comes to us by way of executive order? Do we have the ability to not support unfavorable non-legislation in the form of an executive order?
Go ahead, Gina.
Well, I think, I think specifically this is if something, for example, if somebody were going to be looking at PERS reform at the state, we would definitely be supporting that. And we would support that through some of the different organizations that we work with, like the League of Oregon Cities or the OGFOA, which is the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association. We would, you know, be, be part of that. In terms of if there's an executive order or if there's something that comes down to us that is state statute, we have to follow that. Unless we, something happens where, you know, there's work that's being done. I know there are people who are interested in overturning Measure 110, for example. Right now, we follow Measure 110 because it's the law, so we do that. But if there's, you know, reform for that, then, you know, potentially the city could be involved in that.
Thank you.
Counselor Novak, since we have no in-house lobbying capability, so we have to rely upon the League of Oregon Cities for much of our advocacy in Salem. And whether that's from a positive or a negative standpoint, whether it's fighting against something or fighting for something, we make our, our desires known to them. And if, if it's significant enough, we can take time for, I, I think that Director Bailey has appeared in front of them, as has Jeff Blaine before Matthew Rutgers. So there is the opportunity, but we, we do not have an in-house capability. So we rely a lot on LOC.
Thank you. And I was aware of having sent information to the LOC about our concerns, but that is what we do. We work with them and through them then in answer to that. Under expenditures, number six, it says, "programs that are determined to be inefficient or ineffective shall be reduced in scope or eliminated." I'm wondering if you could give me just one example of where you've done that?
Maple Lawn, preschool.
Maple Lawn, thank you. Okay, then I'm almost done. Under nine, section nine, number four, "the city council will be provided monthly financial reports of revenues and expenditures." I don't think I've seen that in the year and nine months that I'm serving, unless I'm, unless I'm just missing something.
You haven't. And that's something that we are going to work on and something I wanted to ask the council tonight. We were having issues after we did our upgrade to Munis with reporting functionality. It wasn't working as well as we would have liked. We now have the ability to run reports. And if you would like to have revenues and expenditures, we can provide that to you. If you would like something else, please let me know and we can get that going too.
I would personally very much appreciate that. It would help me understand better what's going on. So thank you. And then this is my final one under the financials. The investment policy. It says, "the city of Albany has a home rule charter." And that's, that language is under investment policy. I, I'm stopping here and bringing this up because I don't know why that's even written when from what I've been told when I bring up home rule, home rule, home rule, is that home rule has to bow to anything that comes from the state or federal government. And so why do we even have that language since we're actually not home rule?
So, so Counselor, we changed to another policy. Can we give the other councils a chance to talk about the financial policy?
Yes, sir, but can I get an answer to this or is that not?
I'm sorry, I don't know. What page are you on?
It was under investment policy. And forgive me, I didn't, this is the only one where I didn't write the page number. But it, it just starts with, under investment policy, it must be up toward the top. It says, "the city of Albany has a home rule charter." And I just wondered why that language is there since we really don't operate under home rule from what I've seen in the last year and nine months. We, anytime anything comes from the state, it supersedes us. So how is it that we even have home rule and why is that language under investment policy? Is my question.
The information is just there under an introduction to the investment policy. As far as why we have it listed as, I mean, we are a home rule city. It is, but we are subject to also following the rules of the state. So they do supersede us. And so if we, we can't have a rule or a law that is, a lot of times we can, it would depend. So it's like what I was talking about where our federal spending rules here at the city are more restrictive. So the federal government may say, "we consider a small purchase being $50,000." And we say, "you know what? We consider a small purchase to be $25,000." So we, we are more restrictive in that way. And so we are able to, to do that. In this case, if the state of Oregon is telling us that we have to do something, then we need to do that, but we can make our own rules as long as they don't conflict with the state law.
And I appreciate the example you gave.
Sean Kidd is probably going to be a better person to ask about that. But, you know, as far as, as far as my job is concerned, part of what I am tasked with is to follow the rules and regulations that, that I'm, I'm bound by those.
Counselor Novak, not every state is a home rule state. So I think it'd be best if you allow me to go back and talk to Sean Kidd about it and get you a, a more comprehensive answer. I, I suspect that the reason it's in the financial policy is because it has implications for how we follow that financial policy.
And Director Yeager did give me a good response where she said, "when the federal government says $50,000 is," and, and then we say, "home rule, no, no, for us, that's too big of a number, $10,000, $25,000, whatever." So in that sense, we're exercising home rule. I get it. Thank you. That helps. Thank you.
What's, Counselor? Good?
That's it.
Any other counselors like to speak on the financial policy? Counselor Smith?
This is a lot of reading to go through, but I read through it again this year, as I did last year, my first year on the council, and I am glad that we get to review it every year. It, particularly in the general guidelines on the first few pages, it, it reaffirms and confirms the activities that we do every week, every month, that, the decisions that we are given to make. And I, I like seeing that in writing because it, I, we're not out on a limb and flying blind at all. We're, we have rules and we're following them. And I, I, I would encourage other people to read those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is an investment policy.
No, we covered the investment policy first, actually. That was Garrett Cadeh, who was
who was here from the BPA.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
So, yeah, I think we've covered all the financial policies. These will be coming back to you on Wednesday for approval.
Thank you for your work on this, councillor, Director Jaeger. Is that it? Councillor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is AMC amendments to address portable toilets. Director Bailey, page 32 to 35 in your packet. It is a long sentence.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We're here again to discuss proposed amendments to the municipal code to expand the allowed use of portable toilets in the city. As a quick reminder, under the current AMC, portable toilets are only allowed in limited circumstances. For instance, they're required for certain construction activities, and then they're also allowed for periodic or irregularly scheduled short-term activities for up to 90 days under the current code. Staff and council have discussed at length how to revise the code to allow additional use of portable toilets. The draft ordinance in your packet would revise AMC 9.04 by adding language that allows the use of portable toilets under certain additional circumstances. First, they would be allowed for public use on public property. Next, they would be allowed for public or private use on private property that is owned for commercial, industrial, or institutional use, as long as the property has an existing connection to city water and sewer and an account in good standing. Next, they would be allowed for private use by employees of a business when placed on private property that does not have a water and sewer connection prior to July 1 of this year. This last category is meant to address a small number of older coffee stands primarily that were allowed to develop under old rules where they were not required to have a restroom or restroom agreement. There are a couple of these around town, and they would not be allowed to develop in this way under the current rules. But they do exist, and we felt we needed to address them. The proposed revisions also exclude the use of portable toilets as described in the AMC language on mobile food units in AMC 5.06.160 that the council recently adopted. So we're not trying to upend that municipal code language. Under this proposed language, anyone who would like to use a portable toilet beyond the 90-day time limit in the current code would need the approval of the Public Works Director. Anyone who would like to use a portable toilet beyond 90 days would need to call or come into the Public Works counter to request the extension. If the council agrees with this approach, then we will have to create a approval template for those requests and a record-keeping system, which will probably just be incorporated into our existing permit system. Again, if you support this version of the language, we will reach out to affected parties, including the portable toilet vendors, and discuss it with them. I have not reached out to them yet because I wanted to make sure I was on the right track before I talked with them, rather than having to discuss one approach and have it significantly revised and go discuss another approach. So want to get your buy-in first, and then we'll discuss with them. This item is not scheduled to come back for adoption on a future council meeting agenda, but it can be whenever we get through the remaining discussion with the council and the public. And with that, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Councillor? Councillor Novak?
Thank you. I saw language in the proposed amendment regarding properly screened. And we had had a discussion on the council about that. And I think that councillor Johnson and I both took issue with the idea of putting screens around portable toilets because that's just giving more opportunity for crimes potentially to take place. It's, I personally am not offended by the sight of a portable toilet, and I, I don't think it's worth the risk of, you know, fencing them in so someone doesn't see there's a portable toilet there. Also means that then you can have all kinds of bad actors doing bad things, and, and that's not in public view. So I really would like to see properly screened completely removed from, from anything, any language that we might adopt.
Okay. So that is language that came from the community development department. So we can work with them and find if, if they're, if it's possible to have them not be screened under the current development code and work around that, I think. I don't know if Matthew wants to go into that any further detail, but I think we understand your direction.
I appreciate that. If I might add, I was also, some of these folks have been in touch with me, the gentlemen who were here back when we discussed this in August. And one of them mentioned that, you know, they, they have their business not only in Albany, but in Salem and other places. And I want to bring it to the attention of the council, that apparently in Salem, where they have screens around the porta-potties, homeless people throw a tarp over it, and they make it a little living space, which ought not to be. And he also said that they, they're very territorial, and they keep other people from using them. It's like, no, no, this is their spite, space. It has their tarp over it. It's their home, and they don't let anybody anywhere near the public toilet. They do let the guys come clean them, but they have to, you know, they're, it's just not a good situation. And so I really don't want to see that here. And I want you to know that if you put a box around it, you're looking, it, it could be, it could be all kinds of not good. So again, if we have to talk to whomever we have to talk to, to change, to make that not be part of the deal, I, I really think we should do that.
Thank you. Councillor Smith has a comment?
Our development code requires screening around outdoor dumpsters for commercial businesses for trash and recycling. I wanted to know if we have had any reports of people making those into tarp structures.
Not that I know of, but that would probably be something handled by code enforcement. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Good afternoon, councillors. So I, to, to respond to your question, councillor Smith, that I, from the code enforcement side, on the development code, we haven't had that, that situation reported. You know, Chris, sorry, Christian Dell might, might have some information on that, our code compliance officer, but I'm, I'm not aware of any. And to councillor Novak, as far as the screening of portable toilets in the development code, I'm going off of memory, I don't think we have anything specific to that as far as a requirement. Obviously, in generating this type of code, we're trying to be sensitive to both sides of, of that situation. So we certainly double-check it, but duly noted.
Thank you.
Councillor Kobsdowski?
Just a segue off of one of the comments that councillor Smith made, mentioned, does development code right now require screening for all dumpsters, commercial?
Yeah. For new development, if you're going to have a dumpster location, so large, we're talking about not just trash cans, but large dumpsters.
Okay, not, not the trash ones, but a, a commercial-sized dumpster.
Even like a dumpster that we use just on the other side of this hall or wall right here.
There's a fence.
The city hall dumpster, it's in an enclosure or in an enclosed area.
I could be wrong, but I think I see them all over town that don't have any.
There, there are certainly some that are around town that are in older developments that predated the development code requirement to have them in a screened enclosure. I can tell you, having worked in a lot of different jurisdictions, some jurisdictions go even farther than that and make you put them in a hydraulically isolated enclosure, so that when rainwater hits it, you don't end up with pollution out into the street.
Thank you.
Councillor Bartholomew?
I've seen a, a good example of a screening in, next to the new pickleball courts at LBCC. It's a very tightly screened porta-potty. So I think that, you know, like it was brought up before by Mr. Cordier, that, you know, the specificity of the language, and there is wiggle room, properly screened. You know, I can make a, a judgment call on that. So otherwise, I appreciate the, the, a little bit more flexibility and the, and that it looks like it's at an annual basis. If the person has been given permission, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, the, that on an annual basis, the person can get reauthorization? Is that correct? If I'm reading this incorrectly, I need to know.
Well, I don't think we have an annual requirement that kicks in. It just, if it's going to go beyond 90 days, then they have to get approval for that. So I don't know that there's necessarily an end time. And we, I don't think we're, we're requiring an annual renewal under this language. If, if the council would like some sort of annual re-upping, then we can add that to the language. It's not in there right now.
Oh, okay. So it's just at 90 days, there's a permit required?
Right. If they'd like to keep it for more than 90 days, they need to just contact Public Works and we would, the Public Works Director has the authority to approve that or not approve that. And I think the, you know, the only time it would be withheld would be if there were ongoing problems. I think we would use that as the, the limit where if it's created a nuisance, we would not want to allow that to continue. So otherwise, if it's not a problem, we probably just allow it to keep going.
Thank you.
Councillor Novak?
Question, yeah. With regard to permitting, it would save staff time and also hassle to, I guess, companies that would have to get a permit. If we did, instead of 90 days, just made it a yearly permit, especially for those companies, is that something we could put in?
Well, the current code language allows you, allows entities to have portable toilets for short-term events up to 90 days. So for instance, a festival or something like that. So if we wanted to say you could come in for up to a year, once a year you come in and you can have a permit for up to a year, that would be, we could do that easily. But I don't think we want to remove the initial 90-day period because we do want to have some way of managing short-term events, so that they don't have to come in and ask for permission for a three-day event or something like that. Or you're going to have a toilet out for a week. You don't have to come in and ask for permission for that. But if you want to keep it for beyond 90 days, you have to come in and ask.
Thanks for clarifying that, because I was not clear on that until just now when you said it. So you don't have to get permission for a short-term event. You don't have to go to the Public Works Director and file anything for, okay. It's only if you want to keep it for 90 days or longer?
90 days. And the, of course, there's always a caveat. I would say, if you're going to put a portable toilet in the right-of-way, you do have to come to the city and ask permission to use our right-of-way or city property. But if, for instance, you're going to have one at your house because you're having plumbing work done or something, you would not need to do that unless it were going to be beyond 90 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillor? Councillor Olson?
Yeah. So I'm wondering if there are any members of the building or contracting fraternity here tonight, and whether they have any comment?
I, I will address if, if the, if your question or maybe look, the comments that you're looking for from them would suggest that a contractor that had a permit on a project, that they would have to get permits for a portable toilet, that, that wouldn't be the case. There's still an exemption in our municipal code that allows for properly-maintained chemical toilets to be allowed on construction sites. They do not need a permit for it. Basically, their permit is their, their building permit or SI permit, whatever, whatever they're doing the construction under. It, it makes those facilities allowed.
Okay. And my question is, if there were anybody from the building business here that wanted to comment on the ordinance?
Okay.
And apparently, I don't see anybody raising a hand. So, thank you.
Councillor Olson, I have a small list of people that I'll be calling after we get through this to reach out to people directly. So some existing, some people who've contacted us that would like to use portable toilets, and then also the, the two companies that were here before. So I'll be reaching out to them directly.
You see, you will be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, are we comfortable going forward, once you make those calls? And I do like the idea of kind of cleaning up the per-screening part of it. That'd be really good for me as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is update on community rating system and floodplain management activities. Allison Crowe, is she in house? Or is she, oh, she's just right there.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I am going to share my screen. Perfect. Again, good afternoon. My name is Allison Crowe, and I am the city's floodplain manager, CRS coordinator, and planner two in community development. I appreciate the opportunity to provide the short annual report to you on the city's participation in the community rating system program, or CRS. It's a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management practices that exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP. Although the city does not have a direct role in the price of flood insurance, the city does take measures through this CRS program to reduce the cost of flood insurance for all residents who own property in the floodplain in the city of Albany. CRS has a total of 10 classes to categorize the ranks of the program. These classes range from 10 to 1, with 1 being the best. In 1991, the city of Albany joined the program with a CRS rating of class 9. The city's rating improved to a class 7 in 2005, a class 6 in 2011, and finally, a class 5 in 2017, which we've maintained since then. I am preparing for the annual recertification at the current level for the 2021, 2022 year. There are various requirements for this program, communication logs detailing storm drain and floodplain questions and concerns, updating and maintaining our flood warning and response plan, public outreach, and higher regulatory standards, to name a few. For example, this year, we sent out 1,124 informational floodplain brochures to community members who have parcels within the floodplain and had a booth at the Albany Farmers Market. While I administer this program for the city, there are different departments and staff that I work with to ensure the city's compliance with the NFIP and to maintain our status in the CRS program, such as Public Works and Chuck Perino, our emergency manager and safety officer. Our class 5 rating provides residents who hold flood insurance policies a 25% discount on flood insurance premiums for NFIP policies that are issued or renewed in the special flood hazard area, or SFHA. This discount amounts to an annual savings of approximately $400 per policy and an overall approximate savings of $62,000 for our community each year. There are currently 1,520 communities that have chosen to participate in the CRS program across the country, with 35 being in the state of Oregon. The city of Albany is one of three communities with a class 5 rating in Oregon, with the city of Salem being the highest in the state at a class 4. Our recertification materials are due to the Insurance Services Office, ISO, on October 15. And upon completion of the review, the city will receive a compliance report. This was just meant as a quick overview of our CRS program. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Councillor, any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Are you going to present again Wednesday night, or is this just, just this year?
It was just this one.
All right. Thank you very much. It's good to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Chuck Perino is going to speak to us with natural hazard mitigation plan. It's a verbal presentation. And he has books.
Only if you want.
I know, I want, no.
I do have a executive summary for you all.
Thank you. You're Mr. Perino?
Yes, ma'am.
How nice to meet you.
So this is just a overview of what we've been doing for the last two years. We started the natural hazard.
We started the natural hazard update process in 2021. Due to the pandemic and other calamities throughout the last couple of years, it's been delayed a little bit. We have worked with the Department of Land Conservation and Development on this project. And it has been a great partnership on that, just due to the fact that we have been dealing with so much over the last few years. Having their assistance to kind of walk us through the project, keep us on track and and work with everything has been fabulous. So basically, we started the process back in 2021 with the formation of our steering committee, which was comprised of all the department heads of the city and key staff, such as Allison Crowe, Matt, Matt, public information Matt, excuse me. Thank you. And, you know, other other key staff on that that we worked with. So getting that steering committee together, we reviewed the old documents. The original natural hazard mitigation plan was done in 2010 with an update in 2016. That update knocked it out of the park. It was before my time here, unfortunately. I'd love to take credit for that. But we use the same format as the 2016 update to go through that. And so far, it's been been very well and we're ready to kind of get it moved on to the next part. We received public input on the process through the through social media. We got information. We did some surveys with the public. And we are now ready to submit this to the state. And then, once the state gets done with a review of it, it goes up to FEMA, Region 10, up in Washington for their review and their blessing of it. I will be coming back to the council in a couple of months, probably December, perhaps in January, depending on the speed of our partners and getting that reviewed. So that will be coming up here pretty pretty shortly. So in the development of the process, the first thing we looked at in order to look forward, we looked backwards to kind of find out what we've faced in the past, what sort of hazards that we've dealt with in the recent history and also in in longer term history throughout the city's lifespan. Again, we faced from 2020 to 2022, we faced flooding, wildfires, ice storms, severe heat and a global pandemic throughout that. Those are all natural hazards that were included in our plan, along with some other ones that that didn't make that that list, such as earthquake, tornadoes, droughts and landslides as well. So with that review, we had to up or we had to decide which would be the highest priority on that. You know, we can't disappoint our algebra teachers in high school, so everything includes some sort of math component, right? So we gave all those different hazards a numerical ranking. We had our steering committee go through that and determine which ones had the the greatest risk. And we looked at certain different aspects of that. We looked at the history, how often we we face that hazard. You know, flooding, we face that every year or two. That comes up pretty quickly. Earthquake, not as much. We looked at the probability, the likelihood of future occurrence. Again, a flooding event is pretty likely we're going to face a flooding event pretty in the near future. A earthquake, again, that's a little less less written in stone as to when that can occur. We also looked at vulnerability. That's the percentage of the population that would be affected, percentage of properties in the city that would be affected. Again, this kind of flips the script a little bit. Earthquake would have a large impact on the city, where riverine flooding would just be a smaller impact. It's kind of, you know, in the flooding areas of the of the city. So and we also looked at the maximum threat, the absolute worst case scenario. Again, earthquake, a cascade, a subduction zone earthquake would have a a massive effect on the city, a huge impact, financial impact, a huge public impact and as opposed to some of the other events or other hazards that we deal with. So we also got the citizens' concerns on that. Their concerns were different than ours and we expected that. But we took the inputs that we got from the city or from the citizens, rather, and included that into the natural hazard mitigation plan as well. So once we ranked all these, we gave them each a numerical value. We were able to kind of get that information and then work on different action items for natural hazard mitigation plans, projects, rather, that we could address to take care of, to deal with some of the issues that come up with with that. These include things such as planning. There's a small list of them on, I think it's the last page of the document that I gave you. It's in the blue. A lot, there's about 45 mitigation actions that we have. This is just a small sample of them. A lot of them are kind of duplicates, you know, where we are doing public information for earthquakes, public information for flooding and that kind of thing. But they all fall under these different action types. We have plans. We develop, one of them is to develop a debris management plan. You know, what do we do with all the debris that's left over after an earthquake? What do we do with all the debris that's from an ice storm and limbs from the park come down and things like that? We have monitoring and maintenance where we're looking at a city evacuation routes. One of our action plans would be to conduct a evacuation exercise with a small portion of the city. You know, maybe looking at a neighborhood or a ward or something like that to actually go through the process of an evacuation, work out some of those bugs prior to having to deal with such a traumatic event that that would be. We have, we analyze things. We're looking at bridges, things like that. We're looking at historical buildings. You know, what can we do to help protect the historical buildings downtown? What sort of mitigation actions could we apply for that would help with that process as well? And you're probably asking yourself, why are we doing all this? Why are we putting Chuck through all this process? You should. But, you know, this is a requirement. This is a federal FEMA requirement. If we are to receive grant funding for mitigation projects, we we need to have a up to date mitigation plan. If we are to receive post disaster funding, we need to have an updated mitigation or yeah, updated natural hazard mitigation plan. So that's the main reason. There's, that's the carrot and also the stick that we're we're working with. So so that's what I have. I have a couple, and I I did spare you the 300 page some document. I do have two copies of that if anybody would like some reading. Otherwise, I'm happy to get that to you digitally or or however you would like to have it.
I'd like to copy one.
OK.
I did have one thing is what is, we have a catastrophe, cascade quake, major flood. What's the communications plan for emergency? City council involved in that at all? I mean, are we just going to escape? What's the plan around that?
We we have an emergency operations plan, which is different from this. This is more of a how do we make things better before an event plan as opposed to the emergency operations plan, which is what we do during an event. We do have information in there that calls out, you know, who gets notified about a about coming to this room here to staff the emergency operations center. We have staff that are tagged to work in logistics and planning in command roles, such as Chief Wooton and Chief Harnan. You know, they're they all work with the elected leaders. We would have you folks out there working with your wards. You would serve as liaisons to us, to the public, getting us information, what's going on out there. And we'd be working to make things better. Coming up with a plan every day in the emergency operations center on what to do, what is our priorities and how are we going to get the city back on its feet again?
Thank you. Can you email this to us as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because I get I get calls about this from, you know, different senior communities, the Brookdells, the Bonaventures, they asked me about this because they're concerned, you know, and I appreciate this. I can I can say we're looking at it and we're making plans.
Absolutely, yeah. And the emergency operations plan, I could I could email that to you as well.
Thank you very much.
That's a little less public facing of a document.
No, no, this is this is OK for public consumption.
That is absolutely.
And that's what, that's all I need. I don't need anything detailed, but I think this is very helpful.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Just a comment. This kind of planning takes a lot of work and a lot of people and a lot of attention to detail. I've been there and I I like to see where it is now and let people know that it's not an academic exercise. It's real stuff. And Albany is prepared in a big way for whatever may come our direction. It won't be perfect, but it's never perfect anywhere. But I think we're better prepared than a lot of cities and glad to see this. Thanks.
Well done.
The good thing about this plan is it allows us to follow up on actions, too. A lot of plans sit there and gather dust. But this one, we go through every quarter and look at the things that were accomplished, discuss as to what we want to accomplish next and kind of get some good leadership to kind of, you know, give us some marching directions on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Perino, I also very much appreciate this and I appreciate an opportunity to finally meet you. I have a question with regard to, you said we do obviously have an emergency system in place and you know what we're going to do. Is there any way that you might be able to speak to us sometime and just give us a heads up on what that is so that we're not finding out what it is in the midst of an emergency? I would really appreciate that.
Or on social media.
Right, that too.
I'd be happy to.
I would really, thank you so much, sir, because the way the world is right now, I would really, I just would vastly appreciate knowing it before we need it.
I would be happy to do that anytime.
Thank you.
Nobody ever wants to talk to me, but this is great.
I totally want to talk to you. If you could give me the same kind of information for that as you did here, that would rock. Because I assume that if something seriously horrible happens, I'm going to be a little shook up and I'd like to be functional. And so if I see the information ahead of time, it would help.
OK, sounds good. I'll work with Matt on getting that.
Thank you.
He's great with those, so thanks.
So next up, business from the council. Who'd like to go first?
Me. I know you want me to. I just have one thing, one thing came in, came in right before the meeting. There is a constituent who asked, quote, "Will they ever fix the charging station by the river?" So that is my question on behalf of them. There is a charging station at Penny's, J.C. Penny's, and I, in the parking lot, and I had no idea that it didn't work.
We just put that in, what, a year ago?
About a year ago, yeah. I'll find out for you. That that's not something we have, speaking of partnerships, as we spoke about earlier, that's something we do in partnership with Pacific Power. So I'll ask Seth Sherry to check with them and see what the plan is.
Thank you. And then, once we know, this constituent will know.
I'm glad you checked in that because we put it in, it worked fine.
Yeah.
And nobody's complaining to me about it.
Well, apparently it didn't work very long.
OK.
I guess.
Interesting. Counselor Kupczynski.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Smith.
I appreciated the opportunity to attend the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference in Bend last week. First conference in person in two years. So I had the opportunity, all of us had the opportunity to meet mayors, councilors and league staff who we had been zooming with all this time. Some people were taller than I expected. Some people were shorter than I expected, but they were all on the right path. There are people all over this state, elected by their neighbors and friends, who are doing this work because they care about the places that they live and they care very much. And it's it's people of all all walks of life, all economics, strata, you name it. They're they're people with their hearts in the right places and it was nice to spend three days in that atmosphere, getting to know them a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Bartholomew.
I was, I just want to thank the people, our staff that has been working so hard on all of these things that we've been asking them to do. Director Bailey on the porta potties. And I'm really was excited about the insurance, the flood insurance thing and how we're saving our citizens, you know, costs on their insurance every year. So I I thought that was a very delightful thing to have at this meeting and I wanted to highlight that as well again. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson.
Yes, Hasso brought it up again. And I negotiate the overpass usually a couple of times a day. And I look at the clock and it is usually wrong. And I'm wondering, is there some way that we can get a new mechanism for that clock that will tune in to the stratosphere up there and register the correct time on a permanent basis?
I did ask Director Bailey about this a few months ago. Is she still here? If she, I would accept it, no. First of all, is it your bailiwick, that thing out there?
No, for the record. It is not my clock. I just want you all to know that. It's so. In the beginning, the mechanisms were terrible and we had a hard time. They were battery driven and it was not good. So building maintenance did do quite a bit of work a year or two ago to upgrade those and get the power supply corrected. And so for a couple of years, they've been fine. But there have recently been some problems again. I'm not sure if it's the mechanism or the power supply or what it is. But I'll reach out again to Rick Barnett and see what he can do to fix those. But they'll be right maybe one time a day. So.
Or two times.
Well, I'm retired. It doesn't matter to me what time it is.
Yeah.
But I think it's annoying to the public to see.
You know, it was a great idea. Like visually, the clock tower is wonderful. The mechanisms are not tied together and it, they're kind of a mess on the inside. But I'll talk with Rick and we'll see what they can do.
Do we know where that was purchased? Is that company still in business?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. That was part of the 2009 or so remodel of the train station property. I'm not sure, but I'll see what they can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something that keeps getting left out of the periodic blogs about this issue is that, while people like to comment about how much money the city has spent on that, on the tower, the huge investment, the city did not pay for that tower. It was a gift from one of the Rotary Clubs, a lovely gift. But I I would just like to remind people whose memories are shorter than my own.
Thank you. I I had, I attended the LOC conference for the first time since I've been on city council. And the reason why is that my sister in law came to visit my wife because our 35th anniversary is October 5th of every year. And it was the first time I was able to go. So we had our 37th anniversary. I was actually with the mayors and councilors over there and city managers. But it was a great meeting and my sister, my sister in law and my wife had a great time without me around. That was great. Other than that, we have some stuff we'll talk about on Wednesday, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Now, I was just going to comment, hearing from Director Bailey, that is anybody opposed to the idea of not having a clock in the top of the tower? Just about anybody can pull their phone out and see what time it is. So.
I think people will just look at it because it's on every one of our websites and I think they see that as part of our city's culture and richness.
OK.
Your suggestion that we just knock down the tower?
Oh, no, 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 no. But you could, you could, there could be quite a few things that you could put at the top of a beautiful tower besides a clock.
That could be a project for the Arts Commission.
Well, seems to be a clock tower. It'd have a clock on it. And if we can't figure out how to put a clock that works on a piece of city property, I'm.
I'm sorry, it's much ado about nothing.
It's not a commentary on the city.
OK, moving on to other things. The Matt points out that the natural hazard mitigation plan, which you heard about tonight, will be on the city's website shortly. So it'll be available to all. And then finally, the mayor mentioned the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week and I'm I'm glad that Chuck is still here because, Mayor, you accepted an award. You heard our insurance people talk about a downward trend, which made you very happy, Counselor Bartholomew. And that's what that award partially was for. And Chuck Perino deserves large amount of the credit for it, although he'll be the first one to tell you that it's a team effort and that Holly and Gina played a big role in that as well. But yes, that's correct. So thanks to Chuck. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 5:21 PM on 10th of October 2022.